The regular meeting of the Craven County Board of Education is called to order. Ms. Lee, would you please take a roll call of the Board of Education?
Certainly. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Present.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Present.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Present.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Present.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Present.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Present.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to today's agenda? And if there are any amendments?
Yes.
Ms. Dacey?
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda to recognize our social worker Tara Hardy, who's here with us tonight. She's been appointed recently to the Governor's Commission on Student Wellbeing, and I'd like to add that recognition.
Second.
Discussion? Not. Ms. Lee, would you please? Were are there any other amendments to the agenda? Ms. Lee, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Ms. Kitzinger, would you please review the safety procedures?
Yes. In the event of a fire emergency, we will split the room in half. The right side of the room will exit out the door to my left, and the left side of the room will exit out of the door to my right. Those moving to my right will go out into the parking lot towards the bagel shop, and those moving to my left will go out to the digital sign near Glen Burnie Road and get as far away from the building until the fire department comes and clears the building.
Thank you. Next, we would like to acknowledge some of our special guests here tonight. Do we have any elected officials in the room? I saw Commissioner Chadwick Howard earlier. I don't know if he's still here. And our clerk of court, Ms. Lexanne Huffman, was here, but I don't see any others. But we're glad to have all of you here with us tonight. We'd also like to recognize our Principal of the Year, Ms. Caroline Godwin at Roger Bell. Right there, raise your hand. And our Craven County Teacher of the Year, Ms. Simmons. We have a lot of principals in the room tonight, and I'm very happy to see that. So we would just like to recognize our principals and any of our staff members that are here tonight. And we have any retired educators with us tonight? Yes, I know, I saw several. Thank you all for joining us tonight. At this time, I would call on Mr. Gatchell to offer up our invocation.
Board members, if you'll please pray with me. Heavenly Father, have Your own way this day. You who are the Potter, take us, mold and make us according to Your divine design. Prepare to live into Your grace plan for our service to You and to this country. If our hearts are hardened and do not yield to Your truth, soften them, that they would not resist Your desire that we love as You love without partiality or prejudice. If in our incredibly busy lives our attention and intentions towards You are distracted, focus our eyes on You, that all else would find its proper place in light of Your truth. If our wills are inclined to our own desires conforming to the habits and predilections of this day and age, direct our souls and straighten our paths, that we would be transformed and our minds renewed by Your perfect will. On this day and the days that You allow us to serve in this place, may we, who are the work of Your own hands, prove pleasing to You. In the redemption found only in Your name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I would call on Mr. Lee Kurtman to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would call on Vice Chairman Mason to provide a summary of the work session that we had on Tuesday.
I gotta turn the mic on, sorry. Tuesday's work session was packed. I encourage everyone to watch the full video. This is going to be rather piffy, so we can get to the business. A resolution was passed by the board for the month of the military child. A proclamation for the School Library Month for April was read. There was public input, wish there was more. The superintendent had a lot to celebrate. End of year brings a lot of closure and a lot of celebrations. Playground equipment for Oaks Road was approved and furniture for West Craven Middle. Both restarted schools and found these were sufficient end of year money to purchase more than originally anticipated. There was discussion on the proposed superintendent's budget. The focus was primarily on the local portion, with some information on the state and federal anticipated revenues. The Read to Achieve Summer Camp Plan was approved unanimously. The EOG's summer remediation testing was approved unanimously. Basically, the state is now allowing remediation to occur while the students are still in school, making this option more readily available to more students. The only remediation for summer will be for high school English 2, as their scores will not be received in time during the end of the year. Parents are reminded that any cellphone violations and any cellphones found will invalidate the testing and could potentially invalidate the testing for the whole class, not just the student. The state has set a no tolerance policy for all cellphones being found in the testing room. CTE program was unanimously given approval to seek a grant to extend the program in sixth and seventh grades, as well as eighth, making it available to all of middle school now. The required annual audit contract was approved with the same company. Nutrition was approved to add another freezer, resulting in savings because food can be purchased more in bulk. The National School Board Association provided an overview of their services and offered to assist in finding a new superintendent, and they have the service to provide the search nationwide. HR report 10 in one addendum were approved, and this is pretty piffy. Please watch the video. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next item, which is the public hearing, I do want to recognize Mr. Rick Stout, who's in the back of the room. At the special call meeting at 5:00 today, the board appointed Mr. Stout to be the interim superintendent, and so we're glad to have him here with us tonight. So we are about to go into the public hearing for the budget portion of our meeting. Vice Chairman Mason, have we had people sign up for the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am, six people.
Okay. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order, and Vice Chairman Mason will call each citizen to speak.
First up is Jessica Proctor. Please state your name and address.
Yes, ma'am, I'm Jessica Proctor. I live at 202 Castle Ridge Road, New Bern.
And if you could speak into the mic so they-
I probably should do that, shouldn't I?
Yeah, that way they can hear you-
I'm sort of a rookie at this, you know.
Video land.
My name is Jessica Proctor. I live at 202 Castle Ridge Road in New Bern. Thank you so much for letting me speak, especially on such a sobering, moody Thursday, and thank you, having worked around budgets in my career, for the painstaking work that y'all are getting ready to do or already doing. I'm an HJ mom, and this is our first year in Craven County schools. It is also our first year in public school. And I will share, before I get to my ask, because I was told to keep stay focused in the budget. My dad used to say, if you can't be smart, be observant. And so when I went into a new space, I was very observant. I cannot tell you enough how dedicated, compassionate, and competent the faculty at HJ McDonald is. We have watched my daughter, and they get full credit, grow from being a mediocre-at-best student to making As and Bs. I have watched her grow emotionally in other ways, in very positive ways, and I give credit to that for the staff. Now I'll get to my ask. You recruit great teachers, but I've also observed a lot at the school of the needs of students that are so just painful to know, from the special ed kids to children that are hungry, to the myriad other needs that you see in the community that you serve. And y'all experience this every day, I know, you're elected officials. These teachers, like Mr. Martin, who was my daughter's homeroom teacher, can't do their jobs effectively if they don't have the support of those social workers and guidance counselors and nurses who step in in all the areas where these families struggle. My family's had its own struggles. Hunger is not one of them, but I have thought many times, reflecting as a believer, as a member of this community, how heartbreaking it would be to be a mother or a grandparent or a dad that needs help and would not know the way to get it or not be there to get. So I hope, just to share, you're the experts in this, I'm just a resident sharing, that in order to support our educators the best way that we can, that we provide them with the support to help them help these families. Because we all know, however cliched it is today, a hungry child can't learn. A child without power can't learn. A child that's being beaten can't learn. And these positions help eradicate that for the county, and I've seen it with my own eyes, and I appreciate it. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kelly Muse?
Good evening, I'm Kelly Muse. I live at 612 Matamore's Lane. I was on the phone this morning until 1:30 with a group of teachers concerned with our budget situation, and I asked those teachers, why are you not on the phone with your board representative? Because I'm no longer on the board. And the plain and simple answer was, they watch your meetings. They may not. They can't watch them during the day, during school, but believe it or not, staff is watching. And after what they see goes on and the questions that are asked and the lack of understanding, they do not have the confidence in this board to reach out to you. I have emails in my phone today that I'll be happy to share with you if you're interested to see them. One of the main concerns that they have is our school nurses. Last year, our school nurses touched over 70,000 incidents. So my question is, if you decide to cut school nurses, who's going to count the carbs of an elementary student? Because they don't know how to do that, if they're a diabetic, to adjust their insulin dose. And who, as a staff member, is going to provide that insulin? In middle school and high school, those kids self-carry, and they've been taught how to count their carbs. Our nurses have also had to help our staff when they've had an incident, a seizure, heart palpitations, an issue with an insulin pump. That's huge. The elementary teachers that I spoke to last night would rather see guidance counselors cut and extra social worker to hire than to lose their school nurses. It is also my recommendation that this board get a deeper understanding of teacher allotments. Because they don't look at how many children are in each school. They look at how many first graders you have district-wide, how many fifth graders you have district-wide. So if you have six kids at Brinson and four kids at James W. Smith, and the rest of the balance is made up somewhere else, you may have to hire a teacher and pay them out of local funding. Staff in this district have no idea what pot of money they're paid out of. I asked them last night. Do you know what pot of money you're paid out of? No, they don't. They have no clue as to whether they're paid out of state dollars or local dollars. So there's way more to this funding piece than what you all understand. But the bottom line is, our county commissioners, they have not funded this school system in the manner in which they should, and you want to compare us to Carteret. Well, that's not a like district, because their tax base is way different. A more like district would be Wilson County, and their commissioners are also very generous with their school system, where our commissioners are not. And if this board does not demand better from our county commissioners, shame on every single one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muse. Carol Harshman?
Hello, I'm Carol Harshman, 113 Allen Drive, and I thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've been in practice here in Craven County for 37 years. I'm here again to address the sad reality that funding for school social workers may be in jeopardy. For the record, I would first like to clear up any misunderstanding that the Department of Social Services provides counseling on a regular basis for students, families, and the community. This is not the case, and I'm happy to discuss this with anyone who doesn't have clarity on that. The rule of the school social worker, for clarity, is multifaceted. It begins with relationship building, screening, and assessment for mental health needs. Right now, for example, I can look around this room and identify fairly high levels of anxiety and stress, irritability, certainly hypervigilance. It's written on faces, and it's notable in body language. If I were to ask you right now to identify your level of stress in this moment with a tool, which I have right here, it's called a SED scale, 0 to 100, commonly used tool developed by DOD to identify stress, and just look where you are on the scale. Zero is no stress at all, you're feeling great. You move up into like a mild anxiety, distress, moderates 50. Get up in 70 and 80, you're pretty anxious, distressed, and that can be about work, job, completion of tasks, whatever. Okay. Now, once you've identified where you are and everyone in the room, say I taught you through evidence-based methods to decrease these symptoms, the disturbing thoughts and the intensity of the feelings, then you might better appreciate what social workers can accomplish. Now modify what I just described and how you felt and where you were on the scale to the students who are in an academic setting, willing and wanting to learn but experiencing stress, uncertainty, witnessing angry adults and leaders, having grief over the loss of a friend to suicide, physical and/or sexual abuse, depression, pregnancy, homelessness, numerous other stressors. We have students who are suicidal and stricken by anxiety right in school system, and imagine where they are on that scale. We just had two more school shootings in the country. Students like us respond to a trusted person to talk to, someone who can respect them, listen to them, guide them in learning coping skills to be a better student and a better, more content person. A social worker can run groups to discuss bullying in schools, self-esteem, competence, structure, and a myriad of other things. We teach emotional regulation and self-awareness. We are someone who can interact with the justice system when needed, foster care, family advocacy, crisis intervention. Social workers are trained to assess on an ongoing basis through collaboration with teachers, nurses, and staff. We can refer and coordinate with mobile crisis, other community resources for quicker interventions on behalf of students. Social workers are there for the staff as well. They facilitate on behalf of the mental health of the whole school team. Students deserve to feel safe, not just from gun violence, but from the external stresses of a system that is not prioritizing their mental health needs. Social workers provide that stability when students are feeling the most vulnerable. The future of public schools is fading. The money and resource drain is accelerating to the tune of $6.6 million in private school voucher money that has been funded by the Republican Legislature for 2024 in Craven County alone. Social workers educate and teach ways to cope and deal with the challenges and pressures students face based on this declining funding. Public school students are the future of North Carolina. They will be the generation caring for us and driving our economy. Their mental health cannot be ignored, so I encourage you to fund the salaries of the very people who will work for them to address and confront the challenges that lie ahead. Please fund our school social workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harshman.
Thank you very much. Diane, and I can't read your last name.
Kendall.
Kendall?
T-I-N-D.
Good evening, board members. I left my glasses back at my seat. I'm an idiot. They're on my head. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, I appreciate it. I am happy to be before you today. I live at 501 Chincopin Lane in Trent Woods, and I no longer have any children in the school system, but I did for a number of years. We spent 14 years in Ben Quinn and then went through the whole system, so I feel real strongly about this school system. My parents graduated from it. My husband and I graduated from it, and my children graduated from it. Earlier this week, I did attend your work session and heard some good news about your accreditation, which I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder, but anyway. And part of accreditation, part of the process, is aligning your budget with your mission. And I looked at your mission statement, and it talks about providing a supportive, empowering, academically rich learning environment, and that moves on to inspire and engage all stakeholders toward a better tomorrow. And I think your budget needs to reflect those goals, and you need to be asking for more money locally from the county commissioners. I heard you Tuesday morning. It sounded like you were talking about trying to fit a set amount of money to cover myriad needs that included things like nurses, social workers, what my children used to call specials, teachers, art, music, PE, guidance counselors, and you were looking at trade-offs. And I used to teach economics at Craven Community College, so I know, you know, in order to get something, you have to give up something. But what I'm asking you to do is to give up not asking for enough money. My good friend Charles Dudley always says, you have not because you ask not. So I would say, rather than asking for roughly $24,000, and this number was real interesting, $666,000 for public, non-charter schools from our county commissioners, you need to bump that number up to cover all these things that you need. I understand the state budget is down. I understand your average daily membership appears to be down, but the needs of these students are still there. I look at your responsibility, you have to balance fiscal responsibility with professional expectations. I can tell from the teachers I've met in the Craven County schools, they are doing more and more with less and less, and you know you cannot pour out of an empty vessel. So I would ask that you look at your teacher needs, you look at your student needs, and you revise this budget to ask for what you need. Because if you don't ask for it, you're sure not going to get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall.
Thank you very much. Kristi Frazier?
I'm Kristi Frazier, 800 Deerfoot Circle, District 3. I'm here to talk about 100% of the budget, not 23% of the budget. 23% of the budget is Craven County budget. That's it. The rest of it is, 61% is state. State pays for the teachers primarily. The county pays for the facilities, and the county is not the piggy bank to make up for the bad decisions that have happened in the past. There are state tax dollars as well as county dollars, 61%. Federal money is 17%. No, the federal money is not going away. Federal money is going to back to the state, probably more. So we really need to focus on, what is the 23% of the budget? There are 27 schools in Craven County, and there are 12,700 and some change children. Our ADM is dropping. Our school count is the same as it has been. So we really need to make sense of funding. What is the reality of ADM versus the 27 schools? We are also simply, the board needs to hold people accountable in the administration. Right now, I have, what, watched all the programs. Simply put, the board needs to hold people accountable. Right now, the board has asked for the same data since January. I've watched it. You've asked for it. You keep asking for the list of positions each month. You keep asking for the list of position of what the fund balance is being used for each month. You keep asking for capital projects and have gotten a minimal list. You keep asking for the entire budget, not the 23%, but the 100% of what the budget should look like. I can go on, but at this point, you're getting what you needed. If you're getting what you're needed, you wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here speaking to you right now. When we're going to hold the staff accountable, that, I mean, that's just it. We've got to hold administration accountable. And as a board, as a total board, you can do it. You could say, bring us the list. Bring us the accountability. I would like to see that happen. Our teachers are mostly being paved through the state, not the county. We don't need more social workers, because the county is already funding social workers. We're already getting nurses from the county. The county is already funding. Federal money is not going away. Anybody in this room is here to say, our kids are going to be taken care of. But let's put, let's put the whole budget together, not just 23% of the budget, and demand the commissioners to feed as a piggy bank to this school district. It's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
Steph, thank you very much, sorry. Stephanie Jones?
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Jones, 3200 Granville Court. I'm an old lady. I don't have any children in a school district, never did, probably won't at this stage in my life. But I did have two girls in a school district in Western Pennsylvania. It was a rural school district. And at that time, I was a young person with very little means, but that school district provided my children with an education. One of them went on to be a lawyer, and the other managed to get an MBA a little later in her life. Public school was essential for their success. And I know that is true of many people in Craven County. They depend upon the public school to do for their children what we all hope happens to our children. We shouldn't shortchange them. This budget decision, because I haven't got children in this school, means very little to me personally. Not going to make any difference. I'm here to advocate for my neighbors. My neighbors need the chance of success that was given to my children through public school educations. I want you to, I've sat in meetings, many meetings here, and listened to the praise of various funds that have been given to this school district through COVID relief and various programs and donations from organizations. Money is an important part of this, and you have learned, I have seen it happen, that money, more money, can be used to good effect to make this education for our children better and with a more likely success of a good outcome. I think in your deliberations, I hope in your deliberations, you come to a position to make a bold request of the commissioners, because I want my neighbors to thrive. I know you want your neighbors to thrive, and public education is a part of doing that, a big part of doing that for many, many of the residents of Craven County. And I ask you to do that because it's the righteous thing to do, to help our neighbors. And I ask you to do it because it's a good investment in the future of Craven County and North Carolina. It's the wise thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's it, Madam Chairman.
That's all that signed up for the public hearing. The public hearing is complete, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion.
Have a motion to adjourn the public hearing in a second, and would you please take a roll call vote, Ms. Ashley?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
We're going to go back into the regular meeting. The public hearing is adjourned, and we're back in the regular.
At this time, um, we are going to hear from the staff on, from Ms. Ashley on the local expense budget and the capital outlay budget for '25, '26.
Mr. Lee.
So, tonight, we are bringing you back the proposed budget. We did make some edits with additional information that the, um, board asked of us over the, um, since last Tuesday, and we've worked hard to try to provide you with the information that was requested. Um, and hopefully, you'll get a better feel for, um, what is involved in the local expense account.
Good evening, board members. So, I'm going to, um, I'll go through the entire presentation again, but I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the charts that we did previously. I'll spend more time on the charts that we've added. So, if you go to the next slide, please. Again, current budget year considerations, um, retirement rate increases, insurance premium increases, utility increases, impact of charter school, increased enrollments, reduction in low wealth at about 1.8 million, and then the local current impact for projected state increases at 260,000. The next chart again is the planning ADM numbers at 1138. This is what the state, um, planning initial allotments were based on for Craven County, and we are the enrollment exam that we've spoken to before. Next chart again is the state planning allotments for '25, '26. Um, I did want to point out, these are state planning allotments. So, there, there could be some changes to these allotments depending on how the budget settles out. So, as the state budget's been struck, the House budget has to be agreed to. They have to agree to a common budget for North Carolina. So, there could be some impact in these allotments depending on what happens with the budget process through the General Assembly. So, I just wanted to make that, make you aware of that. But these are the planning allotments that we're basing this year on, as, as up now. Um, additional revenue adjustments, again, no increase in local supplements, um, requesting an increase in county appropriation to cover fixed costs and charter school enrollment increases, and again, a major dependency on the fund balance, even with significant local expense reductions. So, the local expense piece. So, this is, this is a change. So, um, I think board members were requesting positions to the chart that we presented on Tuesday. So, if you look at this, those position counts have been added. So, as an example, local classroom teachers in the '24, '25 budget, there were eight positions in the budget. In the '25, '26, um, proposed budget, that goes away. So, there's zero positions in the budget. Central office administration stayed the same at '24 and '24. Non-instructional support went from 94 to 84. Again, this was the reduction in clerical support. Local nursing's went from five to three. Um, school building administration went from 10 to nine. Let's go to the next slide, please. Um, technology stayed at three and three. And then just a note there that the, the increase in the technology line item was for the health benefits piece only for 15 employees. If you look at, look at the local Esser category, that's where most of the reductions came from, and a lot of the reductions that we've been speaking to, that went from 15 to zero. In the next chart, please. And facility support, um, remained the same. So, if you look at the total, um, positions in the local expense budget, it was 190, and it's going to 154 There was a request from the board to show the county appropriations from 2014 to current. Um, so in 2014, you see the 1972431, and then every year after that. And I think it was Ms. Stacey that was speaking about percentages increase, so you see that on the far right. So, again, last year, there was a 5.79% increase, and this year, it will settle, well, current appropriation that we have in the budget, it will settle in or somewhere between 9% and 10% increase. And you see some years where the, um, there was no increase at all. The next chart's the local revenue chart, and this again hasn't changed from Tuesday. It's still showing the 5.1 dependence on fund balance to balance the budget with the county appropriation being at 2.2 million, with 1.1 million of that being fixed cost increase, and a little bit over a million being for the charter school enrollment increase. So, the next chart, in this way, and this was my feeble attempt at, what does 5.1 million dollars value? Um, and this, all I did was try to capture some of the high hitters in the, in the budget, to say 2.3 million includes all of that that you're seeing. ESOL support, social workers, school interventionists, tutors, contract nurses, part-time custodians, learning system coaches, DITFs. 2.9 million is utilities and insurance premium increases. 1.5 million is the additional assistant principal support that we have in the budget. 4.8 is the, um, classroom teacher supplement. That's for all classroom teachers at the 10 and 1/2%. 5.8 million is what we pay for all facility support. And 4.8 million is all clerical support, all data managers, and all business office support lumped into a group. This is not to tie to anything. This was just an example of Ms. Mason's request of what, what are we getting for our money? And these are some of the things that we are paying for when we balance the budget with that 5.1. Not necessarily that the fund balance pays for these individually, but just sort of a feel for how much money each category, um, includes. So, there's been a lot of talk about social workers and nurses, obviously. So, what we wanted to do was give a feel for how much it would cost to put those positions back in the budget. So, social workers, it would be about 370,000 to put those back in the budget. Nurses, uh, we currently have 17 budgeted. So, to get a nurse in every school, that will require another six. So, that would be about 484,000. So, the total to put the nurses back to a nurse in every school and put the social workers back in the budget would be about 854,000 dollars. I think there was a request from Ms. Stacey just to say what was included in non-instructional support, and these are the big categories in that particular line item. Clerical support at 3.9 million, data managers at 1.3 million, and technology specialists are also included in the non-support, instructional support line item at 417K. There's more in there, uh, Ms. Stacey, but these are kind of the high hitters in the budget. So, again, to, I believe it was Ms. Mason had a question around, and we, we call it underfunded mandates and not unfunded mandates because we can play with the words. But anyway, they would say they give you the money, but we don't think they give us enough money. So, we call it underfunded state allotments. So, if you look on the left-hand side, in this budget year, state health personnel, and those are the categories that we can put in that PRC. It's 006, if anybody cares. It's psychologists, counselors, social workers, and nurses. And we have 28 positions allotted from the state in 006. If you look at non-instructional support, which is 007, in that category, in that PRC, you can look at counselors, social workers, media consultants. And again, 28 positions have been allotted in that PRC. Enhancement teachers, we only get enhan- we only get allotted K5, 1 to 191 students. We get no enhancement teachers for secondary allotted. So, these are the only allotted positions that we get for enhancement, and again, enhancements, music, art, and P.E. And assistant principals, that's based on months of employment. So, basically, we get 98.53 months of employment per ADM. All of the same. That works out to about 120 months of employment, which is about 12 APs is what we're allotted. If you look on the right-hand side, this was our attempt, staff's attempt, to show what we need. So, if you look at that, we, we say we need a nurse in every school at 23. We need psychologists. We certainly have four in the budget. We actually need more than that, so we took it to six. We put the social workers back in the budget at five. Media coordinators, you have 23, one in every, um, traditional school, 37 counselors, 55 enhancement teachers. Because what we do is we, we provide enhancement teachers for secondary as well, and that's 27 positions. So, that's 27 on top of the 28 that were allotted. We say we need 55. And assistant principals, we currently have 35. So, if you take the total of the left and the total of the right, that shows you that we're about underfunded, about 88 positions. So, those positions either have to be made up in the local expense budget if you want to continue those positions, or it has to be made up in another state allotment. And when you do that, then whatever you had in that state allotment, it's like a domino effect. It rolls down to something. So, if you're putting it in low wealth, then you have less low wealth money. So, it all impacts everything. But she, basically, what we're saying is you have about 88 positions that we think are underfunded. And these are the high hitter categories. There's other categories, but we just wanted to concentrate on these because these seem to be the ones that are, had the most focus. And the next chart is, um, there was a request to make, uh, made on actual salary and what these positions, what they cost. So, this is the same chart as the previous, but a little bit more detail around what the salary numbers would be. So, if you look at school psychologists, you'll see an average gross salary, an average, um, direct contribution. That's the health benefit. So, the fully loaded cost for a school psychologist on average is $92,000, fully loaded. We don't want people out there saying, "Well, we're paying psychologists 92,000." That's with all the benefits and everything else on it. And these are the summaries for each one of those categories, giving you a feel for what these positions actually cost in the budget when they're, um, when we complete everything. And again, if you go to the next slide, this shows the difference between the 184 and the 96, which is the 88 underfunded positions that we're seeing from the state allotment in '25, '26. The next chart is the capital outlay. There's, there's no changes to this. Again, this is our list for this coming year. Um, a little bit over a million dollars in what we consider regular capital, and then the Apple lease, which pays for our student devices. Um, this is the second payment of four at the 1.1 million for a total ask of capital of 2.1, which is an increase of about 51,000. And again, um, like I pointed out Tuesday, there was a late add. We have a breaker issue at Grand A. Barn that we desperately need to get fixed over the summer. And the last chart didn't change any. This is other restricted funds. This is only the revenue portion of it, and this will true up as some of the more, some of the revenues, um, become known as far as grants and items like that. So, I know that was, that was very quick, but I wanted to just give you, we, we tried to address some of the issues in Tuesday's session. Um, hopefully, we addressed a few, but I'm sure there's, there's more that we need to take a look at. So, any questions?
A question from the board before we call for the public input.
Okay. Where to start? Um, so, I, I've received lots of comments from lots of folks the last few days, so I'm, I'm trying to boil it down. Uh, and I'm going to start. If you can look at, um, slide seven, you could, if you all could pull up slide seven here for us. So, in the non-instructional support, I had asked you to break down what that meant, and so I appreciate that slide that's further on. But if I'm looking at this, um, decrease here, I believe that we discussed some of that was clerical. And I've, I've had questions from employees about what that means. Does that mean data managers, bookkeepers at, are we sharing? What, what does that look like? Can we explain that?
In the, the clerical that we included in the reduction is the receptionist, secretary, bookkeeper category. We kept data managers whole. So, it's only those people in that particular category.
That would be school and district positions.
School and district, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. So, at the school level and, and here in this building? That's what you're saying?
Including, and transportation, everywhere.
Everything. Facilities, any clerical support that, that fall into those categories.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's helpful. Um, then I think the other thing that I have heard, um, among others, is a question from staff about the BT program, Beginning Teacher Program. So, um, one of the things that I would also say, I'm going to, I'm going to use my, my visual aid here. So, I got this at a conference, and it actually shows, um, the ever-increasing burden on America's public schools. So, it's all the unfunded mandates that are put on our school system, right? So, you know, when you started out in public education in the early 1900s, you were just teaching kids reading, writing, arithmetic, right? And as the decades have gone on, like, the mandates, it's just, it just rolls out like the Dead Sea scrolls, okay? So, the Beginning Teacher Mentors, while a great program, is something that we have to do, right? It's a state mandate. So, can you describe a little bit, and I, I'm happy to have Dr. Boone come up and explain that. But, um, we had done it one way. We've eliminated those positions, and we're looking at a new model. And I, I did have questions about exactly how the new coordinator position was also going to, uh, work.
And, and before I turn it over to Dr. Boone for that explanation, just, there's no local budget impact with BT, Beginning Teacher Mentors. So, that's why it's really not addressed in this presentation.
Okay.
They're paid through title and other funding, but she has a plan for what she's doing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, even this coordinator that we would have is not paid out of local funding?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I'm just, let, let me just say one thing. So, our, we were assured today that our title is paid out of Title II funding, and I did put a call in to make sure, because we had heard some rumors, like people had mentioned, and unless something changes drastically, we've been told our Title II funding will, um, remain at the same level it was last year. So, we're not, there may be some slight adjustments, they said, but we're not expecting any major, um, decrease.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, just as Ms. Stacey said, uh, the Beginning Teacher Support Program is not, it's a, it's a unfunded model, um, but it is a requirement for the, per the State Board Policy TCED 016. Um, and it requires, uh, Beginning Teacher Support for the first three years, um, as, as Beginning Teachers. They are required to have mentors who work directly with them as they transition through the beginning years of being a teacher. Um, annually, um, unless something changes, uh, we submit a plan to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction via our regional educational facilitator. Um, that plan has to be approved by the board unless there's, unless there are changes. We don't, we don't bring that back to you all. Um, but typically, what we've had as a model, the model has switched, um, about three times now over the last couple of years. Uh, we used to have, uh, five district Beginning Teacher Mentors that only worked in, in schools with our Beginning Teachers. While they had buddies, um, in the school level, they were not actually assigned per our, um, BTSP plan or our Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Um, due to the number of, uh, alternative licensed teachers that we have, and the hindrance of the flexibility, it's almost impossible for us to kind of continue with that model because as of right now, we only have one mentor going to one school one day per week. And some of our mentors, most of them live in the western side of the county, and they have to travel all the way to Havelock. So, we only even allot two of them for mileage at this point. We also utilize, um, the ECU New Teacher Support Program. Uh, that program provides, uh, support to our restart schools and to our low-performance schools so that they have more intensive support for the types of things and, um, experiences that they are having there. Uh, so, we have looked to change the model. The, the, the overall components of the Beginning Teacher Support Plan are not changing. Uh, Beginning Teachers will still get that initial port, support for the first three years that they come into the district. And then what we hope is that they still are assigned those those buddy teachers. But our goal now is to move from five individual district mentors to two coordinators, which will handle all of the supports for the North Carolina Teacher Support Program, because ECU is not, cannot do that. They have to be employees. ECU is contract. And so with that, what we want to do is to kind of fall back a little bit to our old model, where the teachers in the building who are supporting our Beginning Teachers on a daily basis, because our mentors can only be there one day a week, they will receive a stipend for the support that they are given. That way, the teachers who are having issues and struggles have someone right there with them every day, versus maybe the need to call them. The mentors who's not working at their school that day have to pay travel and things like that. So since many of our teachers are already taking on that leadership role and working with our BTs anyway, we wanted to support them and offer them that opportunity for leadership and provide them with the stipend, and yet still fulfill the components of the North Carolina Beginning Teacher Support Program by having two district coordinators to fulfill that role.
Okay, so just one follow-up, just for the benefit of the public. We, we have, in this new environment where we have a lot of new teachers, we have, for instance, this year, how many Beginning Teachers?
We have about 135 Beginning Teachers.
Okay. But the coordinator that you're describing would not be traveling to these schools?
Well, they will go and support the lead mentors in the school, but it won't be as frequent as them going to serve the actual teachers, because there are only five of them, and we have 25 sites that they would have to visit. So as of right now, they are literally only going to one school one day per week.
Right, but under this...
The new model, yes. They will get a travel stipend, because they do have to go and support the school-level people, but it won't be as much travel as we've seen with five people traveling.
And the primary other duty that they have, I assume, is an administrative one where there's paperwork required to stay, correct?
Yes, ma'am. All of the paperwork that is required for the North Carolina Beginning Teacher Support Program, because we are evaluated on a five-year cycle, and so they go back five years. So we have to keep the records of all BTs for that five-year mark and provide them with all of that data, so that we have, we earn a rating overall. We have different standards that we have to meet, and then we receive an overall rating. In our last rating, we were just short of being distinguished, but we have moved up in a couple of elements. We're still overall accomplished, which is good, but we also want to meet that goal for the distinguished rating.
Okay. All right, thank you. That, that's helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I, I need from Dr. Boone right now. I do have a few more questions for you, Mr. Lee, though. If we continue looking at Slide 7, I know we've still got this leftover local Esser line on here, and it's, it's no longer funding any positions in this proposed budget, but what is the, what's the remaining, I'm just trying to understand, what's the remaining $300,000 in there for?
For ed-mentum.
I'm sorry?
Ed-mentum.
Oh, ed-mentum, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We put in there, we think we have it covered in other budget line items, but we wanted to make sure that we had money in there for ed-mentum. So we put, we put a plug in for that for $300,000.
Okay. So in other words, you may not actually need that $300,000.
Correct.
Which brings me, that's perfect timing. So if I look down at my school social workers page here, and nurses, so that's...
You want me to move that money?
Well, I'm just saying. I mean, I'm looking at Slide 13, so I, I want to, I want to go through that a little bit, because I, I know you've got 370 there for social workers, but that was for, originally, we were budgeted five this year, and we actually had one retire, who was a pretty seasoned person. So that number is actually, with our current staffing, is, is, is high. And I'm, I mean, while it would be great to have five, I, I like to keep the ones I have at a minimum, so I'm willing to deal here. With regard to nurses, I thought that we currently had 18 Craven County-employed nurses.
I did not include Ms. Mack.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure if I was including Ms. Mack or not either.
In my 17 number, that's not including her.
Okay.
I'd have to check. I don't think so. I think we've excluded, because she's paid from another line item, but I will check on that.
Right. Okay, because I thought that we had 18 currently and six under contract. That was my understanding. Is that your recollection? Okay, maybe five.
We, it was at five, and we went to three in contract, yeah. And I'll verify Ms. Mack. It's either 17 or 18, depending on, on what we do with, with Nurse Mack. And Ms. Stacy, just a comment, the 370 is a fully loaded number?
Right, right.
So that's...
Well, and I know, I recognize that the 210 number I, I used on Tuesday was not fully loaded, but even if I fully load that, it's still, it's still for four, it doesn't get me to that number for four. That's, that's all I'm pointing out. I understand the difference between budgeted and actual. Okay. I think that's all I have for now. I'll let somebody else go for a while.
Other questions? Ms. Kitzinger?
Yep. So I don't know what slide this is on. I don't have, mine are not numbered. I think it's the first actual slide with the first chart, but it's under, no, keep going. Local current expense budget? Keep going, keep, no, okay, keep going. No, 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 right there. So where it says three proposed budget positions for local nursing supplies and subs, is that the three contract nurses?
Well, it's, it's three positions in the local budget. They're contracted nurses now, but yes, you could, you could fill it with contract nurses.
So that would bring us to, from, where we went from five contract nurses to three, that, would that take us to six? Or is that the three that we're keeping from the five?
That's the three that's in the budget.
So this still...
That's part of the 17.
Okay. I don't understand.
There's 14 funded locally, I mean, in state allotments.
Okay.
And then there's three that we're keeping in the local expense.
So this still doesn't put a nurse in every school?
No, ma'am. Uh-uh.
How do we, okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
The 23, on that slide, the 23 number gets you a nurse in every school, because it adds six more to the 17.
I still have the question about, are the people actually, are we actually reducing the number of people, or are we just moving them around to different positions? Because that, I mean, that may be okay, but their, their paycheck doesn't go away.
Well, they're actual reductions. So if you had a learning systems coach who moved into a vacant AP position, you're reducing that learning systems coach position. So there was two positions, you fill it with a person, one position goes away. So they're, they're true reductions. Now, people are moving into vacant, or we're trying to move folks around as much as possible, but they're true reductions, yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Dacey?
So aside from the ed-mentum that you've built in here, is there any other contract that's, that's sort of assumed in here that I wouldn't know about?
Trying to go through all of them. I don't think so. No, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll verify that, Ms. Stacy, but I don't think so.
And, and I do want to just go back, I think it was the same slide we were looking at with Ms. Kitzinger, but it's the school building administration. I know you're showing a decline in positions there, but that is not, I mean, what, what does that encompass?
Those APs.
That is APs, right there. Okay.
And then the one, the one coach.
Yeah, so that going...
Oh, that's, that's showing the decrease because of the coach position being eliminated.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, Ms. Stacy?
I, I would like to make a motion, given the situation that we find ourselves in with regard to this budget. The first, first motion I'd like to make is that we put a freeze on all contracts of any amount pending the budget adoption by county commissioners. I think we need to freeze everything and review everything carefully.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Yes, Ms. Schlesley, you wanted to say something?
Yes, we have put a freeze on all, on all expenses. We are in the process of getting all of our contracts prepared, and we'll be bringing it to you in the May Board meeting, and we'll be able to show you where they're, they're all being funded from. We have two that we are working on right now to, to get a final quote, and then we'll, we'll be prepared to share that with you at the next. But there is a, there's a freeze on all expenses, and that would include contracts at this point.
And regardless of the contract amount?
Yes, we're not, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
But, but you've got a motion.
Yeah.
I just want...
Yes, have a motion and a second. Yes, discussion. And Mr. Gatchel, yes?
All contracts for what? So presumably, you are not saying all contracts for employment?
Correct. I would exclude employment, yes. How about all vendor contracts? How's that, Mr. Gatchel?
That makes it a little, a little, a little more precise. Vendor contracts for products?
I think it would have to be products and services.
Well, I, I'm just asking.
Can, can I ask one clarified question? Is that across all funds? You either want school nutrition?
I would, yeah, I think we'd have to exclude school nutrition.
I think school nutrition is a separate enterprise.
It's a separate, yeah.
It's an enterprise fund, so yeah.
Yeah, it's a separate enterprise, so it would...
Right. It would not be impacted.
Okay.
And these would be ones paid out of local expense?
You're not trying to stop all, everything happening in capital outlay, obviously, because that does not impact anything in local current expense. Just looking for a scalpel rather
Okay, I'll, I'll amend the motion to include vendor contracts for services out of local expenses. How's that?
Do you think you're intending some product as well?
Yes, products and services, yes.
So software?
Yes.
Those kinds?
Yes.
So I have a motion on the table to put a freeze on new contracts and contract spending related to services and products until the budget is... And do I have a second for that amended minute, amended motion?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, I would ask Ms. Schlesley to please take a roll call vote.
So let me just make sure I have it correct. Freeze on all vendor contracts for products and services out of local budget. Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Cartman.
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
I move that we direct staff to revise the budget to ensure that we can pay for social workers, a nurse in every school, and that we adjust appropriately other staffing among elementary guidance counselors to pay for that.
Second.
And I have a second for that motion. Is there any discussion on that?
While we're discussing it, I'd like to put on the table the enhancement tables and the assistant principals too, because we have to consider the whole pie, not just part of the pie, eat a piece, and then say, oops, we don't, we can't, there's no, where else to go. So my question is, when we look at our, the question boils down to is, the county has limited budget too. We, we could ask the county to float a bond to increase taxes, because it will be an even year next year, to pay for everything, or we have to start deciding our enhancement teachers and APs and social worker, we're going to have to make a decision as to what's important. Otherwise, it's $8 million, and the county doesn't have that money.
So I heard a motion to have the staff revise the budget to include some deliverable components, including social workers, nurses, assistant principals. Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
Are we still having discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I just would like to point out, and we've spoken several times about nurses and social workers needed in our schools. This week, the update on why we need social workers in our schools, unfortunately, is that we have had two elementary students, one is self-harm. And by self-harm, I mean, take their lives in our buildings. And the ones who have dealt with this are our social workers. So I don't see how we can get around providing that for our students. And, you know, we, as the adults in the room and the ones who are making these decisions, I, I, I think that we need to find a way to fit them into the budget. We cannot do without them. I'm okay with the situation that we are in as far as our schools sharing our social workers, but they are doing the hard, hard work. And Ms. Harshman, I'm sorry for calling you out, but thank you for coming and explaining to us how the school social workers differ from those that are, I guess, I don't know how to say it out in, in society, because they are different. It's a totally different skill set, different training, and it's something that not every adult in the school buildings is quite trained or equipped to deal, to deal with. Some of these situations that our students face, it takes more than just a caring heart to deal with and to face it with. And they, they need, they're needed. Our students need our social workers. So if we could find a way to, to fund them, I'd be very grateful. And I know that our students and our social workers will be grateful to remain here to do the work that they are called to do. And as far as the school nurses as well, you know, obviously, they have a certain skill set that they've been trained to do. We've mentioned this many times before, there, you know, we can't administer Narcan, we can't check sugar or give insulin or, you know, and if somebody falls, what do we do? We need our nurses. We just, was it the year before last, we accomplished getting a, a nurse in every school. And I think to do away with that would be very disheartening. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I, I wish that people would really understand the gravity of the situation that some of our students and our administrators and our teachers deal with. But this is just my opinion, and for what it's worth, that's where it is. So, thank you.
So I would say, in any budget situation, we're dealing with finite resources. And so I think the board has been pretty clear about some of the positions and the services that we want to keep in our schools. And so what we still have not had the conversation about is, have we looked at the other spending besides just positions and people? Even though that makes up the bulk of our budget, there is plenty of other spending that goes on. And I'm not saying all of it isn't important or has some relevance, but... And I'm not saying all of it isn't important or has some relevance, but we are talking about people services that our faculty and staff have told us is important to them and what goes on in their schools. And so I just, in a, asking the staff to go back and take another look at the budget and incorporating these positions that we've said are important, I would implore the staff to please look at the other spending, including maybe starting at a contract services level, not related to the contracts that happen in the classroom, but other spending. We have close to $165 million worth of spending in this district. I think we are not doing our due diligence as a board or as anyone who is responsible for the success of this district if we do not look everywhere. So is there any more discussion?
I second that and I just want to qualify for everybody. Last year, our budget was $143 million. That's a lot of money. And we're asking to raise it significantly more, so...
So we had a motion on the table to ask the staff to take a look, make some additional revisions to the budget. I had a second from Ms. Kitzinger and no additional discussion on that?
Can I just clarify?
Yes, Ms. Stacy?
I'm not suggesting that we add things back and not adjust other positions. I think we have to do that. I recognize we have to prioritize. I'm just saying that I believe, given public input, given what we know about our operations, that the priorities should be a nurse in every school, at least our four social workers. I think there are positions that are included in this budget that teachers have indicated and administrators have indicated to me could be more easily shared among elementary schools in particular than could school nurses. And we have to begin prioritizing. We'd like to have everything, I get that, but the reality is we have to make hard choices. And so that was my motion.
Yes, Ms. Davis?
And I'll go off of what she said. I feel that there are positions that we could share amongst elementary schools. We could share counselors. If we could maybe get nurses in every schools and keep our social workers, maybe our counselors, keep them, but let's just share them. So I think there's some play in there that we could do to try to make this work.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion or comment?
I do want to thank the board for that direction. That's sort of what we've been needing. I mean, to say, you know, which parts do you want to put back in and adjust and things like that? So that motion is very helpful for us, very helpful.
Ms. Kitzinger, did you have additional comments? No more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, I would ask Ms. Schlesley to take a roll call vote.
Okay, this would be to revise the budget to include four social workers and a nurse at every school by re-allotting elementary guidance counselors, or any way possible.
Or other parts of the budget that might have to be.
Or other parts of the budget. Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
No.
Ms., Mr. Lee Cartman.
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
No.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Yes.
Motion passes. I need direction. Could we get some direction on assistant principals?
Yes, I thought we had said assistant principals. The board had said keep the assistant principals.
That's what I wanted to make sure I heard.
I remember that from our budget discussion on the...
Madam Chairman, I think that in looking at everything, as important as assistant principals are, are there some other opportunities there as well that we can do some sharing or whatever with? You know, we're looking at everything. I think we need to look at everything.
Mm-hmm. I concur with that. Everything. Yeah.
So...
Question about that?
Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
So, and if we're looking at assistant principals, do you mean like leaving a school without assistant principal at all, or maybe taking one from, that has, how many does New Bern have, four, three, four?
Yes, New Bern High School has four assistant principals.
Okay, so taking one that has four, maybe down to three or two, or, you know, a middle school that has two, taking it back down to one, do we just mean like consolidating them, or are we going to end up leaving a school without an assistant principal at all? That's just my question. I'm just asking you guys, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think mainly you're looking at your elementary schools in particular with smaller populations and what have you. High schools is its own beast and its own animal with things that are going on there, but particularly at elementary, are there some ways that they could be shared? Are there some other opportunities in there or whatever?
So with the motion that just passed, I will not be entertaining a motion tonight to approve the budget as presented. Mr. Lee, are you going to share the capital outlay? Was that the last of that? Yes, okay, yep, yep, yep. So our next order of business is the public input portion of our meeting, and I believe we have some citizens who want to... I'm going to just read the public input statement before we get started calling the list, Ms. Mason. As we begin the public input portion of the meeting, we want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to speak to the Board of Education. Speakers will address the board from the podium and at the front of the room and begin your remarks by stating your name and your address. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. However, the board, in accordance with policy, will include a discussion of the public input at the end of the meeting, at which time the board might discuss some of those issues that were raised in the public comment period. The Board of Education is here to listen to those who have signed up to speak, and our speakers will be called upon one at a time and will have up to five minutes for speaking. If you're still speaking when the alarm sounds, you know, I have to gavel you out. So the decorum for our public meeting is to be polite and civil and respectful. I would ask that all of your comments to the board be focused, polite, do not include any personal attacks or name-calling, and to be directed to the board. Please refrain from applause and other outbursts until we're finished with our public input. Thank you, everyone, and at this time I will ask Ms. Mason to call up our first speaker for public input.
Roberta Ellison?
Might not be here.
Okay, moving on. Kelly Muse?
I'm sorry. Um, oh, no? There we go. Okay. I think one of the questions that you all need to ask Stacy Lee is how much money was spent out of ESER funding on our facilities that we saved Craven County government. It was a boat ton. The other thing I want to remind you all of is that you all voted just the other month or so ago that all of our school nurses would carry our Narcan, because the SROs can't be depended to do so. They either have expired Narcan or it's locked in the glove compartment of their car. Mr. Cartman is correct. The other question that you all need to ask Ms. Lee is about assistant principal allotments. And there are a lot of neighboring districts that touch us that have no AP at all in an elementary school. And I value our assistant principals, and I would hate to think that our schools might be left without one, but that very well may be the case. The other recommendation I have for you all is that you have a conversation with Nurse Mack. Guidance counselors are walking a thin line, folks, providing therapies to students without a license, and that can be a criminal offense and open the door for you all to get sued. There's lots of doors that are cracking open during this process that's going to make it really easy for this district to get sued by the right parent that has the right attorney and enough money to back it up. You're on a slippery slope, so you better ask a lot of questions before you start making decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Muse.
Next?
Next is Joseph Twilley.
Joe Twilley, 3150 Drew Avenue. Good evening, members of the board. I stand here with my wife, Ashley, who recently made a Facebook post regarding special education, also known as the Exceptional Children's Program. The post claimed that the EC department is planning to combine students who are severe and profound in the adaptive setting with children like my son, who is classified as mild to moderate, in a separate setting as well as with kids in resource setting. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea recognizes that need for various settings has different environments best meet a child's needs while providing the least restrictive environment possible in accordance with IDEA. Merging these settings would place teachers in an impossible situation as they would be unable to meet the diverse needs of all their students. Before you argue that this isn't happening, I want to share that since my wife's post, multiple current and former teachers in Craven County have reached out to her confirming that this is already occurring in some classrooms. Some of these former teachers have left the district for this very reason. Today, my wife was contacted by the district who confirmed that this is up to the principal at each school to decide whether to merge the different EC settings. We were very confused because we initially heard this was misinformation. Then former and current teachers reached out to us stating they are dealing with this issue. Now we have been told that is indeed happening, but is contingent on each individual school administration. We truly appreciate our EC teachers here, but we feel the situation adds more stress to an already challenging job, especially considering the limited funding for special education. If it is indeed true that this policy is left to the district or discretion of individual schools and our teachers have expressed feeling overwhelmed, we are, you and the EC department, not addressing this situation and providing the support that the teachers need. I was at the last county commissioners' meeting where I was berated by Commissioner Mark pretty much for asking money for you guys. But it's really, it shouldn't be up to me asking money from the county commissioner. You're all here. Every one of you should be there saying, hey, if we need money, please give us the money. We pay taxes for a reason, right? Everybody pays taxes. You guys need to be there. I'm going to be going to the next meeting, I'm sorry, which I'm pretty sure Commissioner Mark and I will have a very lovely conversation of why he refuses to return any of my phone calls or emails. Also, last time I was here, I asked you guys, hey, go talk to your EC teachers. Go to the EC departments. Go talk to your teachers. Go to these schools. I'm kind of wondering how many of you have actually talked to your EC teachers. I know you guys have lives and I'm not sure if this is your main job or if you have jobs other than this, but that is important. These students, they don't have mouthpieces except for the parents. We are the mouths for them. We are the ones that speak out for them. And I want to support this school district. I've had a daughter in Creekside, Grover, graduated from New Bern High. I've had my issues with New Bern High, trust me, and I've, you know, I've talked to you guys about that. But now I have a son in Creekside, and if you guys think I'm not going to fight for you, you're out of your mind. I'm going to try to do whatever I can to get him as much funding and as much help and as much support as humanly possible. I'm just asking that you guys do the same. If you guys need help from the parents, please let us know. If you don't think parents care enough to raise a fuss, you guys don't know parents very well, and most of you are parents, if not all of you. So let us help you. If you need help, let us help. I've already, I already found out from our state senator that we're not getting as much funding because of Western North Carolina. They're trying to support them with every dollar humanly possible because of disasters out there. So if you're not getting as much funding this year, that's why. How many of you guys actually know that? I'm going to guess not too many of you. I'm just asking, the EC department needs your help. I know you guys are busy with the budget, but please help the EC department also. And also, your Apple lease is over a million dollars. How about we try to renegotiate with Apple and try to get some of that money back? That might help. I don't like tablets very much anyway, and you got an Apple, you got a Dell, but try renegotiating some of these contracts that are out of control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think the next name's crossed off, I'm going to look for a nod, Kristy Fraser. Okay, Ms. Glenn Fink?
Yeah, my name's Glenn Fink, 646 Goose Creek Road. I believe this is the most important public input provided to the Craven County Board of Education by me for such a critical time as this. This is my prayer for our Craven County school system. Dear God, my Lord, and my Savior, Jesus Christ, I pray for every individual board member, specifically for their physical and mental and spiritual well-being. I pray they hit their knees and seek your face in all things, but especially their servant's work of leading the Craven County Public School System's business. I pray you will crush any personal agendas that distract from this board's mandate, lift up their wisdom, unity, and harmony in all that they do to accomplish the mission, which is providing the very best education to the students of our great county. There are few things more important than ensuring every single child is provided a safe, engaging, compassionate, wholesome environment in which to learn the highest academic skills and methods to become the very best and brightest individual possible. This will provide the opportunity to become wise, highly motivated, hardworking, and effective adults to carry out your will for their lives. This is the mission. We all know education and knowledge properly and effectively applied is the great equalizer in this world and life, in this world and life, and there is absolutely no substitute. It's impossible to govern our way to this pinnacle of individual student success in a system of meritocracy. I pray for every Craven County public school system employee without differentiation on title or status who are all critical to the success of the mission of educating our children. However, I must ask for a special anointing and blessing of our frontline teachers and assistants who put their heart and soul in their students. This is where the rubber meets the road, the real work of our schools happen, and they are the force multiplier for accomplishing the mission of our schools. I pray for every student and their families for maximum engagement in education in a world that is so distracting with an economy that is so challenging. Provide family strength, energy, and will to make education their highest priority. I know there must be balance in our lives, but we must have a strong bias for learning during our children's formative years because that investment provides a means to greater freedom and impact the rest of their lives. Prompt parents to ensure their children are in the classroom every school day, instilled with self-discipline and self-control and focused attention. Without the support of parents, the teachers and their assistants have no chance of getting the most effort and the highest success from their students. Truancy must be eradicated from our school culture. All means and actions available must be deployed to make this happen, including legal enforcement as a last resort. I thank you, God, for your recent appointment of our federal government leadership and pray for the elimination of the Department of Education. for the elimination of the Department of Education. So our authority of our sovereign state of North Carolina is restored, allowing every penny of our taxpayers' money apportioned to education be spent in the most efficient, effective way without waste, fraud, or abuse. I pray our North Carolina state government as a whole, and specifically the Department of Public Education, will stop all the indoctrination and mind-bending programs and activities to allow our every second of precious instruction time to be focused on traditional core subject matter with a specific emphasis on reading and math, proven to be the most critical skills to student success. I thank you, God, for raising up a godly citizen to fill the District Two Board of Education seat. I thank you, Lord, for listening to my prayer. Your will be done, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Fink.
That is it for our public input. Before we take a short break, I would like to take this time to recognize our social workers. We amended the agenda at the beginning, if you remember, and we wanted to recognize them. So, Ms. Lee, I will give you the floor.
Yes, ma'am. In April of 2025, Governor Josh Stein established via executive order the Governor's Advisory Council for Student Safety and Well-Being. The mission of the Advisory Council is to advance North Carolina's commitment to safe, welcoming, and inclusive schools by proposing and implementing solutions to promote school safety and improve student physical, social, and emotional well-being. Craven County is proud to have representation on this council. We honor Ms. Tara Hardy tonight. She is a Craven County Schools social worker, and she works and will represent the Southeast.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hardy. So at this time, we are going to take a break. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Back in our regular meeting. And our next item is the Chairman's Report. And it starts with discussion of public input. So I would ask my fellow board members, if you have any comments or things you'd like to share. Ms. Dacey?
I'll start. Well, obviously, we always appreciate the public input. I think it's really important to hear it, especially in the budget process. And I just want to say to everybody who came that we heard you and we thank you for the input very much. And I think the board is concerned about the same issues that the public is. I also think it's important to clarify that, you know, a lot has been said about what we knew about this year's budget discussion last year. And we knew this was going to be a difficult budget cycle even then. And, you know, I think it is true that the county has always given the school system what we've asked for, but it is also true that the school system has largely been told what to ask for. That wasn't the case last year, but it was the case the first year I was on this board. And it squares with my knowledge of the way in which the county has traditionally handled this budget process. And I just am going to be completely transparent about that. So, that's all I have.
Any additional comments? Nope. I would also like to thank everyone who came out to speak tonight. I would just reiterate that I still stand strongly behind the fact that I believe every single person in Craven County is a stakeholder in what we do in our schools. And it doesn't matter if you have children in the schools or never had children in the schools. It doesn't even really matter if you're a taxpayer or not a taxpayer. If you live in this county and you utilize the services and things in this county, you are a stakeholder of the outcomes from this school district. And so I'm always so happy to see this room fill up, even when people agree or disagree with matters of the board, because it means that they acknowledge they are stakeholders and they have a stake in what's going on here. And so I certainly appreciate that. I would also reiterate, as I have said several times during this budget cycle, it is true that the commissioners have not denied us money in the past. And they just are asking that, and really, they aren't the ones asking. This school board is the ones asking, just show us where the money needs to go and where it's being spent. And I don't think that's unreasonable for people to say, "I'm not just going to throw money at you in the name of education." It's the easiest thing for us to throw money around for, right? Because we know that it's impacting children. But I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation by our commissioners. I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation by anyone in this room. But I do appreciate the comments and the input from the public here tonight. And as Ms. Dacey said, we hear you. And it does seem that some of the concerns and the interest and direction of the board reflect those things of the public. So just stick with us. We're almost through the budget cycle. Thank you for coming out. Next up, we want to do a special academic recognition. And I would call your attention to this super senior right here, Parker Taylor. So last week, we had an academic banquet for graduating seniors. Those were really exceptional students who had all maintained a 4.0 or better all through their four years in high school. And through an erroneous omission on our part, Parker was omitted from that list and that recognition. And there's nothing we can do to replace that experience for her. But we do think that we addressed it immediately internally, and I'm hopeful that we wouldn't have an oversight like that ever happen again. But so tonight, I do want us to take a moment to recognize Parker. She's not here with us tonight, but I still would like to recognize her. Parker has maintained a 4.0 or better her entire high school career, all four years of high school. And that's included taking AP classes, honors classes, and even dual enrollment college classes. Parker is a member of the National Honor Society, where she serves as the Executive Board Project Chair. And she is also the Interact Club Media Chair. She's involved in Project Unity and Choose Love Club. Parker has not just got all of those civic-type accomplishments, but she's also an athlete. She has been a varsity cheerleader for her entire four years of high school. And she was chosen as an All-American Cheerleader, and she had the privilege of participating and cheering in the Pearl Harbor Parade. So we were really pleased to honor, we had 187 students who have achieved the same academic accomplishment, and it is something really to be proud of. It's something for every stakeholder in Craven County to be proud of. I'm pleased to say that Parker has committed to the University of South Carolina, where she plans to go in the fall. And she plans to study public health with a focus on genetics. So we wish her well. Her mother is here with us tonight, and we appreciate you being here. And we are proud of Parker and the other 186 academic superstars that we were able to recognize in Craven County. Our next item is to approve our board minutes. So we are approving regular meetings from the March 18th Work Session, the March 19th Special Called Meeting, the March 20th Board Meeting, and the March 24th Special Called Meeting.
Motion to approve all.
I have a motion to approve all of those sets of minutes. Do I have a second? And I have a second to approve all of those minutes as presented? So is there any discussion or any amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, I would ask Ms. Lee to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we will approve the minutes from our recent closed session minute meetings. We had a February 17th panel hearing, March 18th closed session meeting, March 20th closed session meeting, and March 24th closed session.
Motion to approve all.
Have a motion to approve all the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion or amendments to these minutes as presented? Hearing none, I would ask you, Ms. Lee, to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of our consent agenda items. And first, I would ask if there are any items to be removed from the consent agenda. We have three items on there. The out-of-county and water field trips, the Bangor Scholarship recipients, and the 25-26 board meeting schedule. Okay. Hearing that nothing should be removed from there, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and the items as presented there.
Motion.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Can I?
Second.
Do I have a second? Have a second from Mr. Kurtman. Is there any discussion on those items? Hearing none, I would ask Ms. Lee to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask the board if there is a need to go into a closed session this evening. If so, I would entertain a motion to do so.
I move that we go into closed session.
Okay.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A3 to protect the attorney-client privilege, consult with our attorney.
Have a motion to go into closed session? Do I have a second?
Second.
Actually, let me amend it. I think we also need to potentially consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 381 dot 11A6.
Second.
And I have a second. Ms. Kitzinger, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Lee, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We, the board is in closed session. We, the board is in closed session. Back in regular, the board went into closed session and no action was taken in closed session. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve HR Report 10B.
Motion.
Have a motion to approve it.
Second.
And a second. I'm sorry. Dr. Boone, did you have? No? Is there any discussion? Or Dr. Boone, do you have additional comments for us? Mistress Lee, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. This one is on Human Resources Report 10B.
That's right.
Addendum. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
And Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Dr. Boone?
Yes. I would like to make a recommendation that you all approve Human Resources Report 10C for the month of April 2025.
Motion.
Have a motion? And a second from Mistress Dacey? Is there any discussion about Human Resources Report 10C? Hearing none, I would ask Mistress Lee to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Board? At this time, I would like to open up the floor for...
Point of information, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, yeah? So, we've obviously discussed the budget extensively tonight. And so, my question is whether or not the board would be willing to entertain passage of the recommended budget request with the changes that we have already requested in mind. That would be a total local expense budget of how much is the amount you're asking us to? Well, I, I would like to see the budget, mimic that one slide. I don't want us to ask for more money for charter schools to go into our coffers for something. I would like to see what that money is going to go to on that slide. I would like to see that slide modified. Well, the money is going to go to charter schools whether you break it out or not. It has to. So, I don't understand. You want to make up a slide that doesn't reflect reality? I, I don't, I don't understand that. That money was never ours to begin with. It's a pass-through. And, and I, I don't think it's good practice to say pass-throughs need to be made up by the local county. I mean, it was, it was a pass-through. It was never ours to begin with. And, you know, we, we get a budget based on ADM and other allotments. And I don't have a problem going and asking for more money. But, um, that's not ours to ask for. We just don't see eye to eye on that. Well, my, my question was whether, and I was trying to, to figure out if, if the board, given the adjustments that the motion and the direction that was given to staff, is the amount requested as presented an amount that the board is prepared to request? That's my only question.
I am not prepared to request the bottom line that's been requested tonight.
I am not prepared to request the bottom line that's been requested tonight without the revisions that were directed.
And I would agree with the chairman.
So for clarification on my end, when we go in and we make the recommended changes to adjust, to be able to put the social workers and the nurses in by reducing staffing in other areas, or looking at the totality of contracts, if we, once we do that, then, help me Stacy, then we still would be asking for, are, are you, are you saying you're, you don't want to ask for the charter school funding? The, I, I'm struggling. Sorry.
I'm saying that without the revisions, we don't actually know the bottom line number that we're asking for. And I, I would just mention again that, um, a piece of information is about the differences in the positions in the current versus the, and I know you had a, a high level view of that, Mr. Lee, I'm, I'm, I know that, but, um, that, I mean, that's what we've been asking for, really, for a couple of months.
Turn that thing on, Mike. Turn the mic on, I'm sorry.
Put, to put the social workers and the nurses back in the budget and basically keep the budget the way it is now. So we would find eight hundred plus thousand dollars in reductions and put those back in the budget. But the ask of the county would have to be the same because if it's not the same, then you have to come up with more reductions. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that, that- That, that is my motion exactly, yes.
There is a motion on the?
No, no, this is a motion I made earlier during the budget discussion.
Can you, can you read back that motion we approved?
Yeah. The motion was to revise the budget to include four social workers and a nurse in every school by looking at sharing elementary guidance counselors and different, looking at different parts of the budget.
Looking at ways to come up with the money to fund those positions with other reductions in the budget.
But I did not understand that motion to mean that we would accept the, um, amount to ask the commissioners for. Uh, I understood it to mean that we would take another look at the budget, and it may very well be that it's that same number. Once we've done that, did I, did I misunderstand that?
You did not misunderstand. You did not. The motion was, no, taken.
Yep.
Balance this and this.
Yep.
But Ms. Stacy's comment was, would you accept it with those revisions? I'm, I'm sorry.
That's a separate issue from what that motion.
Thank you. Will you also, since you're here, clarify again how the charter school funding works for the benefit of the board?
Yes ma'am. So basically, we get, um, monthly enrollment from the charter schools that we verify, and then we pay on per student. So every month, we get a bill going out the door. So, the, the million dollars in the budget that we've asked for, for the county, if, if it's not in charter schools, then you're short some other place because we have to pay that bill no matter what. So, I mean, basically, that's what that money is used for. If it wasn't there, it would have to be used for something else. So it's, it's not, I understand what Ms. Mason is saying. We, the money is paid to the charter schools, but it's part of the budget in total, and if you don't have that money, then you're short that money because we have to pay the charter schools.
Well, here's a good idea we could ask for, social workers instead of the charter school.
And the charter school increase is only seven hundred thousand dollars. It's not the full 1.1 million because-
Right, it's seven, it's almost eight hundred thousand for Riverside because we're catching it up. We put one more year of enrollment for Riverside, and then the virtual charter school increase is anticipated. That's what makes up the million thirty-eight.
So there was another motion to, or were you just, you, yes, you, you-
It was a point of information. You don't have to take any further.
While we're here, I just have one quick point of information to make. Um, this number for social workers, three hundred and seventy thousand and fifty-three dollars, I just want to point out, um, that it's awfully close to the number that we just paid Dr. Miller. Um, so had we not done that, perhaps we could have saved all this conversation and time and grief about saving our social workers.
At this time, I would ask the board members to share any, um, board comments that they have, and we can start. Would you like to start, Mr. Kirkman?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Um, I have nothing except to remind folks that the Partners in Education Annual Luncheon is going to be in May, and tickets are on sale if you would like those. Suzanne Gifford would be glad to get you some of those. And a reminder that Partners in Education has given four point five million dollars over the last ten years directly to our schools and our classrooms. So, that's all I have.
Um, I would just, um, welcome Mr. Stout and, um, Mr. Blunt, and, uh, thank you for, for taking this challenge on, and, uh, look, look forward to, um, working with you to move the district forward.
Happy Easter.
If there's no, no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.